We'll call this meeting to order, starting with a determination of the quorum. You guys always get this out of order.
Sorry.
Mr. Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Uh, we do. Mr. Chairman, we have seven presidents, they're all absent.
Excellent. I'd like to advise for quick allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting tonight, I want to take just a couple of minutes and recognize the tragedy of Newtown, Connecticut. I know I speak for the entire board and really the entire district when I say that our hearts and prayers go out. If you are like me, and I'm sure everyone was, when you heard about the news last week, it was hard to hold your composure at that moment. I know that this sort of event affects those who were a part of it and an entire community and an entire country. And so on behalf of the Faribault School District, I want to extend our sadness and our hope of a speedy and quick recovery for the entire community, and our hearts are with them. And so for this moment, we'll take a brief moment of silence to recognize that tragedy. Thank you. Next on our agenda is to approve the agenda. We have a couple of quick changes. Other matters, item A, is going to be removed. It's not ready to come before the board tonight, so that's going to be removed from the agenda. I want to add an item C, other, under other matters. The item will be to recognize the service of James Wolfe, so we'll do that at that time. With those additions, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Recognitions and awards, I don't see anything here tonight, so nothing there tonight. That brings us then to community comment. This is a time for any member of the community to come forward and share any items that they would like with the board. There is a time limit of three minutes per speaker and fifteen minutes per topic.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
I am just here to tell you that I found a couple of websites that help with situations like ours where we don't have funding for our music programs. And I have emailed both, and I think it would help if other people in the community and other people on the board would email them. One is VH1 Save the Music. It's a great program. They have lots of funding to help. And the other one is, I believe, a Minnesota-based one, and it's Avia, A-V-I-A Productions. And they help save programs that have been reduced or eliminated for not only music programs but arts programs. So I think it would help if people in the community and people on the board would email them, tell them the situation. It's not maybe just enough for one person in the community to say, hey, you know, we would like to get funding for this. It's going to be eliminated. We have a great program. I want to save that program. And it's really in my heart to make sure that these kids that are coming up next year have the same opportunity that my beautiful daughter has had with her orchestra. She's been playing since fourth grade. She started with Mrs. Olson. And it means a lot to her and it means a lot to the rest of the kids also on the orchestra band, choir, all the other programs that are there too. So, I mean, these are a couple of things that we could do to reach out, to try to find some other solutions to the problem. I don't want to be part of the bringing down of a music program. I want to be a part of trying to save the music programs because I think it's so important. It uses a different part of the brain than it does for, like, learning math. It's a different part of the brain, and it uses that part of the brain and it stimulates that part of the brain. It's very important, and kids who are involved do better in school. So I would just like to say that I'm trying to do something, and I hope that the rest of the people in the community who watch this will also try to find other solutions to help. And that's all I have to say. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And, James, thank you for all your years of service.
Any other comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along with the agenda. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair, a question. On item B, what?
Actually, hang on. I'm sorry, Richard. I don't think on a consent agenda we can discuss something unless we remove it from the consent agenda. I understand the point of order. Is that right? Mr. Clerk, does that sound right? I think that's right. Consent agendas are not open for discussion, so if you want to discuss an item, we can remove it, and you can do that.
Oh, yeah, didn't.
So which item would you like to remove?
Item B.
Item B being all of employment?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll remove item B from the agenda, I'm sorry, from the consent agenda?
You have a motion and a second, though. We have to make an amendment to the original motion.
I don't think so. Because any board member can request something coming out of the consent agenda.
Right, before the motion is made and a second is put.
Because I believe the motion is to approve the consent.
I will revise my motion to remove B.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
From the consent agenda, so we can have further discussion.
I should have asked before we did the motion. I apologize. Okay.
Tom was the second, was he not?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have to do a quick vote here to amend the motion so that we can remove item B. I have no troubles with that. We're just trying to follow the formalities of how this works. So, we have a motion and a second.
Oh, wait a minute. Member requests. Request an item removed, it's removed. We don't vote on whether we remove it.
Well, let's see, there's some debate here, I guess, about whether or not that has to happen before the motion or after the motion.
Well, you could defeat it, and you could defeat it if you take a motion on it, and you really can't defeat this one. If he wants to remove it, it's removed, so I would say that proceed, proceed.
Mr. The clerk rules on these, so I'm going to go to the front of the terrace. Can we simply remove it, or do we have to vote to remove it?
Simply remove it.
We're going to simply remove it. I'm for expediency. So item B is now removed from the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So item B is now removed from the consent agenda. We'll get to that right after handling the consent agenda. Any, there is no discussion on the consent agenda. Any other items to be removed? Hearing none. We need to do a roll, Mr. Clerk, on consent agenda, which now includes the minutes, additional assignments, and other, and authorization of payments, transfers, and investment activity.
James Wolfe?
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud?
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jason Ingrit?
Aye.
Deb Davis?
Aye.
Tom Gasper?
Aye.
And I vote aye, and Mr. Chairman, eight zero.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Clerk? All right, now.
Or seven. I'm sorry.
Well, next address, item B from what was originally the consent agenda, the, we'll now call it employment. Mr. Olson, you have some questions on that.
I just had a simple question.
Sorry to make it complicated.
What is a community ed refugee school grant instructor? That was, that was, because it shows up three times for a cost of eighty-five hundred dollars. I just wanted to know what it is.
Yeah, and I can briefly do that, and if I need more, I'll ask Amri to come up and help out. But basically, we have, we secured a grant from the refugee, the Department of Human Services. And as a result, we were able to get twenty-six thousand dollars in grant money. But in order to implement the grant, we had to hire some folks with that grant money, and so that's what that is. It's just people that are part of that grant that have been hired to help lead this.
Then when the grant's done?
Then they're done. Yep, yep, yep. And the grant, for your information, is an after-school program that we use for kids considered refugees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for one, just a simple.
Wasn't a question. All right. I will entertain a motion to approve the employment.
I move approval since I probably.
We have a motion to approve the employment.
I'll second.
Part of the consent agenda, and the second, any further discussion? This was not on the consent agenda, so we don't need to do a recall, roll call now. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Next up on the agenda, the curriculum, we have a curriculum committee report. I don't know if Tom's doing that, or if.
We didn't have, did you guys have a meeting?
No.
So there's probably nothing to report.
Okay.
Not this one.
Next on the agenda, from the policy committee, we have a few policies in front of us tonight. Would anybody like to tell us about the policy committee before we get into those?
That would be Todd.
Yeah.
The rest of us were all absent.
Well, the main ones you're looking at tonight are going to be the ones that we reviewed a month ago. So the policy committee met and we reviewed, actually, the kind of a strategy, I guess you'd call it, looking at future policies and also policies that are quite old. The future policies, we're pretty much caught up with all the policies with the MSBA. We have a couple that we have to get in there. Yep. But we have a lot of old, old policies that were created back in the seventies that we want the policy committee to review and make sure if they're going to be rescinded that they're, that they're somewhere else within the policies that are currently there. So we really didn't do a lot at the policy committee, other than try to organize kind of a strategy for the next year to look at old policies and get them out of the books. And that's.
Thank you, Mr. Saxon. All right then. We have a number of policies here for a second reading tonight. We saw these at our last meeting as well for the first reading. They are Policy 205, Open Meetings and Closed Meetings. Policy 404, Employment Background Checks. Policy 505, Distribution of Non-School Sponsored, that must say more than that, Sponsored Materials on School Premises by Students and Employees. I would enter, we've looked at these already, so I'll entertain a motion to approve all of these in one action at this time.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on any of these?
One question. How extensive is our employment background checks? Of what went on?
We use the, I guess, the standard check. Do you have that information right now, Nicole? This, how much detail? There's like three different levels, and we go to the second level of background checks, which will give us the Minnesota, the Minnesota check, right? Do we do a nationwide check on that one, too? Okay, so we do the nation and the Minnesota. Then there's a more in-depth one that's more expensive.
Okay.
But if you want, I can give you more information on that, too. We can actually send that background checklist to the board members. It might be good for you guys to see it anyways.
Any other questions on these?
I had a question about the distribution of non-sponsored materials. I read that policy, but I just wondered, can you kind of in a nutshell tell us what we do?
I might be leaning on Colleen on this one. For the distribution of materials, oh, hold it, no, I'm sorry. Wrong one. I was thinking of the expired one, the, when you sell the materials. For the distribution of non-school-sponsored materials by students and employees, basically, there's, it's a policy that allows us to have some say in people who want to do distributing of any kind of materials that we deem as a district to be non-school-sponsored. So, for example, if you have, I'm trying to think of an example now. You're going to put me on the spot. If there was a.
Boy Scouts.
Boy Scouts, yeah, perfect example. If there are Boy Scouts, they would have to go through a process of having to get preapproval for being able to send out information or hand out information prior to actually giving that information out. And it does, it has to go through my office in order for that to happen. And we're trying to actually limit a lot of the non-school-sponsored materials so that they're not getting stuffed in backpacks in the day of students. But basically, it has to go through a process of going through me in order to be approved or disapproved for the district. The policy also covers the educational materials and describes which ones are okay to go ahead and distribute within the school, too. So, more specific questions, Howard, on that as?
No, I just kind of wanted to hear what you had to say about it.
It's a process for people. If they want to distribute non-school materials, they've got to go through the district office in order to do that, to get approval.
Yeah, it was just kind of surprising to me. You know, it's pretty open, really, except for limitations that you put on for content. But you have a process where you kind of filter through them.
It is, but the, just the caution that's true with all of these things is that if you, it's really hard to distinguish from one group to another group. So if there is a group that wants to come in, like the Boy Scouts, and then a church group would like to come in, and then another group would like to come in, it's really hard to say no to those groups when you've already said yes to the previous group. So you have to be careful and talk, I've had groups where I've had a discussion, and I've asked them not to come in, where they probably could have pursued it and actually come in. But for the most part, the groups that I've talked to have been very cooperative when we go through the process.
I'm sorry, I didn't give you a heads up.
That's all right.
I was going to ask that, but when I was looking at it here, I was remembering what I was reading about it.
Yep.
I just thought I'd like to hear kind of how we have.
And quite honestly, this really came up last year when we, we had a lot of materials that were being distributed at the end of the day at classrooms where elementary kids were getting their backpacks with flyers from different groups. And we really eliminated that last year, and I think rightly so. They're, they're non-school things, and I want the kids there to learn, and the teachers need to be on task. There's certainly exceptions to those rules, but we wanted to keep it as, as educational as possible and keep those non-school functioning things out there.
Any other questions on these policies? All right, hearing none. We have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is to rescind the policies that the ones we just approved are replacing. So they have the same numbers and the same names. So we are rescinding Policy 205, Open Meetings and Closed Meetings. We are rescinding Policy 404, the Employment Background Checks. And we are rescinding Policy 505, Distribution of Non-School Sponsored Materials on School Premises by Students and Employees. The new ones are minor changes from these, so we need to take these out of the books now that we put new ones in there. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rescission of these three policies. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have on here the 2013 Policy Committee meeting schedule. I don't know if there's anything we need to discuss on that. It's there for your information. It's just a report, unless there's questions on that. All right, hearing no questions, we will move right along to item 8B for the Finance Committee. Starting with the minutes you have in your packet, is there a Finance Committee report for us this evening?
As I will say, that apparently, in contrast to some of the other committees, we did have a full meeting this month, including our accountant who slid over from Mankato for the seven-thirty meeting, literally. In a car, but slid nonetheless, staying on the highway at all times. So, that's the minutes. And we did approve, well, not approve, but saw the 2013 Finance Committee meeting schedule, no problems with that. And then we went through the final levy certification, and Colleen will give a report on that as it's somewhat instructive first, too. So.
All right. Colleen will talk to us. Does that item come? So, yeah, wait, hang on a second.
Starts on page fifty-six of our report.
I'll also mention, as I look at the agenda item, there is a report on the meeting schedule. Unless there's any questions on that, the next item is the final levy certification. Not hearing any questions on this schedule. I'll turn it over to Colleen to tell us about the levy certification. Thank you.
We're at the point in the process where you need to approve the final levy for the taxes payable in 2013. And you're required at this meeting to talk about that and to talk about our budget for the current year. So we're here to talk about the school district portion of taxes for 2013, not the city, not the county. Those jurisdictions have their own tax hearing meetings. So I'm going to refer to the PowerPoint, and I think you have that, too. Just some general information. We levy in three funds, the General Fund, Community Service Fund, and Debt Service Fund. And this levy does have to be certified by December twenty-eighth, so we've got plenty of time to do that. Tax levies for our school district represent about nine percent of our total revenue budget for the General Fund. So it's not a significant contribution, but it is important. The 2012 payable, 2013 levy is revenue for the thirteen-fourteen school year. So it gets a little complicated, but it's taxes that people will pay out of their pocket in calendar 2013, but it's actually revenue for us in the thirteen-fourteen school year. In the General Fund, on the next slide, you can see that last year, our levy was three point two million, or almost three point three million. For thirteen, it's three point five million, or just a little bit shy of that. So that's a net increase of a hundred and ninety-six thousand. We had three areas where we had major increases, our referendum, operating capital, where due to pupil unit projections being a little bit lower than the last year. And then our integration levy is based on the actual dollars that are spent. So we had a budget, and we spent less than what was budgeted, so we have a levy adjustment coming through from prior years on that. The increases were in equity, health and safety, building land lease, and alternative facilities. The health and safety is always based on the projects that we anticipate to do in that year, so we're thinking two years out and trying to figure out what health and safety projects we'll have going. The land lease is going up for two reasons. One is the crack building. We added space at that facility, which we leased. And then the district office now comes back into lease levy authority, and that was out for one year. The alternative facilities levy is a cleanup from an old project. That was about a three-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand-dollar project that was missed at the department level. And so we're levying that over three years to make up for that. Any questions? If you have any questions, just raise your hand, otherwise I'll keep moving on. The Community Service Fund levy in twelve, it was three-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand. In thirteen, it'll be three-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, so a minor increase of about five thousand dollars. There was a decrease in early childhood family out of about forty-seven-hundred, and school age care increased about ten thousand. That's where that net comes in. On the next slide, the Debt Service Fund levy in twelve was five-million-seventy-eight-thousand. In thirteen, it'll be five-million-two-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand. That's an increase of a hundred and fifty-one-thousand. There were some decreases in our debt service payments. Those payments are based on the bond schedules. But we also had a larger excess fund balance adjustment last year than we do this year. So that comes up with an increase. It's kind of an arbitrary increase. This is the fund where we levy five percent more than what we actually need. In case there are high tax delinquencies, we can still make our bond payments. So over time, you build up a fund, an excess fund balance, and as that excess grows, you have to give it back to the taxpayers. So last year, we had a huge reduction for excess. This year, our reduction's a little bit smaller. That's why it looks like there's an increase, but it really isn't, if that makes sense. So all our levies in 2012, they were eight-million-seven-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand. For thirteen, it's nine-million-ninety-five-thousand, which is an increase of three-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, or four point zero four percent.
What was the last year?
The levy for last year? The eight-million-seven-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand.
The percentage?
Increase over the year before?
Yeah, right, exactly.
Oh, I don't have that information. Any other questions on the levy? Okay. We're also required then to talk about the budget, so the budget for this year, we'll start with the General Fund. We ended up with a fund balance at June thirtieth of almost eight point nine million in the total General Fund. Our revenues are projected at forty-million-one-ninety-two, expenditures at forty-one-million-one-oh-three. So we're projecting a fund balance of just a little over eight million at the end of this year. On the next slide, in the Food Service Fund.
Excuse me, Colleen, that fund balance reflects both undesignedated and designated, right?
Correct.
That is all undesignedated, so.
Yes.
Out of that seven million, what would you say would be undesignedated, your estimate?
About five million. A little over five, probably.
A couple million that really deals with reserved fund balance that is specifically set aside for, if you get a budget.
Correct. And then remember, in, as part of the budget process last year, and instead of making some cuts, we're using some excess fund balance in a couple of different areas to cover those. So that's, that's why there's a little deficit there.
I think it's important to note that that fund balance is not just our bank savings account.
Right.
Okay.
We have several reserved accounts.
Thanks.
The Food Service Fund ended up at about four-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand last year. We have revenues of two-million-fourty-seven-thousand. Expenditure is very close to that, so our fund balance is projected to be pretty close to what we ended up with there. That's a self-sustaining fund, and that's the way it's supposed to be, so that fund is in good shape. The Community Service Fund is also a self-sustaining fund. They ended up at about two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand at the end of last year. Revenues of one point seven million. Expenditure is just a little bit over that, so they're spending down a little bit of their fund balance. They'll end up at about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. The next slide gives you just a little bit of more detail in community service. I know there were a lot of questions when we took that over from the city about what the difference is going to be. And you can see here that in all those different categories, I've listed the expenditures for fiscal twelve and the budget for fiscal thirteen. So you can see that in almost every case, it's very close to where it was in fiscal twelve. The General Community Ed is the area where the city used to run that, and now the school district has taken that over. On the next slide, Building Construction Fund, we ended up at two-point-five million at the end of last year. We're very little revenues coming back in. Most of that money now has been spent on projects, so there isn't much interest income to be had yet. And then expenditures, this will be updated because we fully expect that most of that fund balance will be spent this year. Those projects are pretty much complete. We're waiting on just a few punch list items, but those projects are for the most part done.
Doesn't look like we'll go in the hole.
No. Matter of fact, we probably, we're working on that right now. We should hopefully have it done by the end of the week, but I think we'll still have a little bit of money left over.
And Colleen, I'm sorry, just to clarify on that money left over, because this was always a big issue when we, when we passed this, the bond for this, the money left over will be going straight back to the taxpayers.
I should say, there's probably money still sitting there. We've held off on some of the projects, just waiting for final numbers. So we have a couple of choices. We can finish up some of those projects that we didn't do, or we can refund it to the taxpayers.
Sure, sure.
Couple, couple options there, and we'll talk about that when we get some final numbers and make a decision on what we do. I don't think it's going to be a significant amount. I don't think it's going to be a significant amount, in, out of the fifteen million, it might be a hundred thousand. Okay, and the Debt Service Fund, that balance is used to make our bond payments, similar to your mortgage payments if you're a homeowner. That fund ended up at about six point four million at the end of the year. Our revenues are a little over five million, expenditure's the same, five million one hundred and forty-six thousand, so this is pretty normal for us. Although, this fund balance is a little bit higher, if you remember from the audit report, we refunded one of our bond issues. You remember the auditor talking about that, and we can't pay it off until February. So, we've got the money sitting in the bank, so to speak, and it will be paying off that old issue in February. So, this fund balance will, is arbitrarily high, usually it's right around three million, between two and three million. So, it's a little bit high right now, but it'll go down. And then our Trust Fund, it's just a very small fund that we have a couple of scholarships that go in and out through the district, and that's about three thousand dollars. Fund balance, and we usually get in about twenty-five hundred, so there's some scholarships that carry over from year to year. If we look at the next slide, we, you can see that the expenditures by fund, the General Fund is by, by and large, the largest share of our expenditures, representing about eighty-two percent of what we do in the school district business world. Four percent is the Food Service Fund, three percent's Community Service, and you can see the others there. So, we really do focus on the General Fund when we talk about budgets, and that's where most of our day-to-day expenses come from. So, on the next slide, we get a little bit more detail about the General Fund, we look at the revenues by source. Eighty-two percent of our revenues come from the state, very dependent on what the legislature does and the state economy. So, it's very difficult for districts to maintain programs when you're so dependent on what the economy does and what the legislature does for funding. Federal sources are five percent, local property taxes nine percent, and then we have miscellaneous local revenue at four percent. Fees, those kinds of things that we charge for kids to participate in sports, rental income, that kind of thing. On the expenditure side, in the General Fund, eighty percent of our money then gets spent on salaries and benefits. We're a very labor-intensive business, fourteen percent is on purchase services, four percent on supplies and materials, two percent on capital expenditures, and then a small amount on debt service and other. And that's it, do you have any questions on the levy certification or the budget for this year?
Colleen, could you give me a couple of examples of what, what falls in purchased services, is that, a food service?
Transportation, no, not food service, because that would be a different fund, we're talking about the General Fund. This would be our transportation costs, consultants, electricity, anything that we have to purchase to get the service.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions for Colleen on this?
I make the motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further questions? This is not a resolution, so we do not need a roll call, is that right? So, we'll start with all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you, Colleen. All right, next, next on the agenda is the Reduction of Substitute Pay, it's a report, who wants to?
I can just mention that, obviously with, with the referendum not passing, we're looking for any little, any areas where we can save money. And, small amounts, big amounts, and we thought, looking at the amount we pay for substitute teachers, we thought we could reduce that and still be competitive in the region, and so I applaud them for doing that. And you'll see the numbers there on page seventy-five, and Nicole could answer any questions that you might have.
I think I just want to clarify real quickly that these are not, if we have teachers that are doing substituting in the classrooms, it doesn't apply to them. These are just substitutes that are outside of our school districts that we hire.
Can you clarify that on this, right?
It's kind of, maybe it's a little more complicated. If we, if we have a teacher that's asked to sub for some reason, then we pay them that regular rate, that's in a contract. But if we have somebody who may live in Faribault or Oat Town or Northfield, and we need a sub because one of our staff has gone sick, it goes to the A S O P system and that person gets paid this amount. It's not the same amount as what the teacher's contract has, so we're not applying the same.
So, as you're saying, if somebody substitutes in a class during their prep time, they get some rate?
Right, the, the ones that we have.
That's in account.
Yep, that's correct, yep.
If one of our teachers is substituting for another one of our teachers.
Yeah, yep.
It doesn't say here, so maybe you don't have this number off the top of your head, do you have any idea what amount we spend on substitutes in a, in a typical year? Roughly, what is that number?
She did all the work on this, so I don't want to take any credit for her hard work, it was her idea and her hard work, so we really thank her for that.
She seems happy to let you come up though.
She's always like that.
She didn't raise you to support you.
I believe it's about a half a million, it's not an insignificant cost, so we spend a lot, and that's not only teacher subs, that's parasubs and clerical subs too, so.
Isn't it mentioned here, clerical, paraprofessional teachers?
Yep.
It's already mentioned, yeah, total of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Sorry, where do you see that? Oh, did I just send?
That's on page seventy-five.
Oh, I skipped a page, Maxie.
Oh, okay.
That was, thank you.
Technology.
Thank you very much.
It's okay, we don't mind answering questions.
You can tell it was a good question, you thought it at halftime, so, trying to save some face here, thank you. Any, any other questions that have not already been answered perhaps? Okay, well, thank you, Colleen and Cole, for bringing that in front of us. Next is enrollment trends.
Right, we had asked to look at this at the previous meeting, and we do have a nice data, we don't, Colleen is able to access a nice database, so we can look at this. But I would caution that the latest data we have is for the ten-eleven school year, and then we are in the twelve-thirteen school year now. We do have a net outflow of students with the primary destination being Northfield and Medford. And there are a variety of reasons that can explain this, but I think it's important to keep track of this now in the ensuing years without, with the loss of the, the failure of the referendum to pass and cutting some programs to see how these numbers might change. One of us would be glad to answer any questions you may have, but I'm looking specifically at, no page numbers. Oh, yes, I'm looking at page eighty, it's on the left-hand side, that's resident students of Faribault attending Northfield. And the page number is on the left margin, you'll see the trend over the last fifteen or so years. And on page eighty-one is residents, student of Faribault attending Medford. Now, there is some inflow too, it's not all one way, but the net is generally an outflow. Any questions for us?
There's another chart for languages too. Yeah, there's another chart for languages on eighty-two. See the increase in Somali from quite a few years ago.
I think that's good to point out, back in, you have that chart in nineteen ninety-seven. You can compare the numbers, in this case, the Spanish population was a hundred and ninety-five students, and then now in two thousand and twelve, it's six hundred and nineteen. And sixteen different languages that are spoken at home in our community. Somali students, there was one in nineteen ninety-seven, now there's two hundred and forty-six. So, it's good information for us, especially when you look at the, our E L S in hiring, and I think we've done the right thing with some of these hires.
Excellent, to look at how it's changed over the years. Any questions on this item?
Just out of curiosity, do we have any reasons why these students are out of the district? Is it programming, is it's, their parents work there, is it?
You do not have any information.
We have reasons that I get when the open roll comes through, but it's not, I wouldn't say it's any data that is, that raises any sort of a red flag. We have kids coming in from outside districts saying that they want a bigger school experience, and they want some other learning opportunities. And I have kids leaving the Faribault School District saying that, I want a smaller school experience and academics. But, a lot of it's where the parents live, of course, and that has a lot to do with it too. Or they've already lived in this district, I just had to sign three open enrollment forms for three kids who have already been going to Northfield, and mom and dad just moved into the Faribault School District, so. But I would say there isn't anything out there that I would say is a, a red flag for our district.
Any other questions?
So, is it safe to say that we have about nine hundred students where English is not their first language, out of twenty-nine hundred?
I just got rid of it now, if that's what the, is that the number says, I, I just took it off.
I think twenty-nine hundred is the number of English speakers, so.
Oh, that's page eighty-two?
Sorry.
Eighty-two.
Yep, page eighty-two.
Twenty-nine hundred is not the total, that's the number of English.
It's English.
Did you get your questions, add questionings?
I did.
All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none, next is the State Aid Payment Schedule, we have a report on that. Who's going to tell us, is that a Colleen report?
This is just for your information, as you know, the, part of the state's balance, balancing of their budget included shifting aid payments to school districts where we're only getting about sixty percent of our, what we were supposed to be getting. We normally would get ninety percent of our state aid in any given year, and part of the balancing that the state has done over the years is to reduce that. It shifts the cash for them, so they end up balancing a budget and just shifting it down the road. With the forecast that came out in November, the current biennium was projected to be one point three billion or so better than what they had anticipated. So, when that happens, the first place they go with that extra money is to pay back the shift that they've done with school districts. So, this was a letter just to inform all of us that the current aid payment schedule is going back to eighty-two point five percent, so we're getting very close to that ninety, that's the good news. And if you read in the letter, the bad news is that the projected deficit for the next biennium is still one point over one billion. So, there's still no new money going forward, but all this means is that we're able to get our state aids on a more timely basis. It's not additional revenue, it's just additional cash coming in sooner.
And I think, Colleen, that's the point I want to make clear, that this is not additional revenue.
Right.
We've always counted on the state paying this money to us, it's a future date, so it's mostly for us a cash flow issue.
That's right.
As I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
Do we have to borrow the money as a dividend in order to wait for the state to pay us this money? So, this means less borrowing, but it's not the same as new revenue, and so it doesn't change our budgeting process in a, in a significant way.
The only thing it does is maybe allows us to pay off, I mean, we're going to check this week to see if we can pay off those aid anticipations, pay off our borrowing a little bit easier earlier to save a little bit of interest income. And hopefully, next year with it at eighty-two and a half percent, we won't have to borrow, or if we do, it'll be very minimal. So, we'll save some money on interest expense, but again, it's not going to be as significant.
This is kind of a rhetorical question, I kind of know the answer to it, but I think it's good to know. With all this money that's flowing back to school districts now, how much will our General Fund balance increase?
Zero.
Zero. I just want to make sure people understand that, it's not going to increase.
It's not new revenue, all it does is just give us our cash a little bit earlier than we had anticipated, so. But I just wanted to let you know that that's kind of the good news of the forecast.
Thank you, Colleen. Okay. Next is our Enrollment Report. Looks like our numbers are holding steady, in line with our projections for the year, so our enrollment looks good, questions on that? We also have a financial report in front of you. Any questions on that? Okay, hearing none, next is our Gifts and Donations. We have a number of gifts this evening to recognize and to take action on, formal acceptance of. They are the Roosevelt P T O for a three hundred dollar order of books from Scholastic Book Fair for Roosevelt Media Center. The Lincoln P T A, a five hundred and eight dollar and seventy-seven cent donation to purchase a binding machine for the teacher workroom at Lincoln Elementary. The Faribault Booster Club, more work on our fitness sensor, an amount of fourteen thousand six hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-four cents for another order of equipment to fill out that center. An additional donation from the Faribault Booster Club for the Fitness Center of sixteen hundred and thirty-nine dollars. The last part of the W A C S A C charge, I'm not sure what that is, is that the water?
Way I can say, water and sewer.
The water and sewer charge, that's right. And then last, Walmart for an amount of one thousand dollars, which was twenty fifty-dollar gift cards to be given to twenty Roosevelt Elementary school builders to purchase supplies for their classroom. So, as always, we are always very grateful as a school district when members of the community step forward to work with our schools and, and to help them find ways to, to supply our kids with everything that they need and our teachers. So, we say thank you, and with that, I will entertain a motion to approve these gifts.
So moved.
Of a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Of a motion and a second to approve, any discussion?
I had a question about, why Roosevelt, to get those fifty-dollar gift cards?
What was the Roosevelt P T O, oh, that one, I'm sorry, you're talking about the Walmart one, I don't know.
I think that when you go into, sign up for those, you're going to, you're going to decide what school you want those donations to go. So, parents arbitrarily sign up for Roosevelt when they go to Walmart and decide, so it could be another school too.
So, it's parents that are generating.
Generating them dollars.
Generating them, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, um, did we do a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Yes, we have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. The Compulsory Instruction Compliance Data Report, report, who is giving us this report?
Kathy does most of this work to begin with, and you want to just explain what you've done?
Well, actually Jean Morris prepares this, and this goes to the state of Minnesota. The traditional non-public students in compliance, which would be the non-public schools in the district, there's five hundred and thirty-seven students. And homeschool students in compliance, which means all of their reporting has been filed, one hundred and nineteen. And then this chart gives the breakdown of the ages, both non-public and homeschool.
So, this is simply a report we put back together, we're responsible as a district to make sure that all students in the district are receiving, regardless of whether or not they attend our public schools, we're responsible to make sure they're receiving an education that's in compliance.
That's correct.
That's what this report tells us. Okay, any other questions on this item?
Or did I say there was only one, one not in compliance?
That has been corrected, that's, they did get the report in, and we made several phone calls, they had forgotten to file about homeschool. But that is done now, so they are compliant.
Any further questions? This is just a report for our information, so no action is needed. All right, other committee reports. All right, other committee reports. Um, we have no insurance committee, uh, meeting to report. Uh, wellness committee, Anne Marie.
Good evening, I believe you have the minutes attached, so you can look at those. But the meeting was good, it was, hasn't met since, I believe, four, three of twelve, so it's been a few months. But it was well-attended, and I think the one thing that came out of it was something I, sorry, I didn't attach, but it's called the Healthier U S School Challenge. And that's something where Faribault Public Schools is ranked, um, in lots of different criteria, where we do meet some things and we don't meet some things, and this is gonna be a subcommittee that forms to review this, to take some action and move forward on what we can improve in the schools to meet this challenge.
Any questions for Anne Marie? Do we have a board member on this committee, or?
Dean.
Yes, James.
Well, now you have to.
And I was on it too, so.
Oh, okay. You have questions? All right, thank you. Uh, next item, uh, community ed, again, Anne Marie. I waited just long enough to make sure.
So much.
I should've waited till you were mid-sitting down, I'm sorry.
Would've been a good spot. Uh, okay, so Advisory Council met, the first community education advisory council met on the eleventh of December. Jerry was present for that meeting, so thank you. Uh, there's sixteen members that have signed up to participate on that council. I'm missing maybe business, I'd like to add at least one private industry person, but the makeup of that board is well-represented, um, in terms of private citizen slash parent. Uh, we have a foundation, a community-based organization, a couple of people from C V Os. County is represented, other educational institutions like South Central, the STEM School. Faribault Public Schools, of course, is represented, the Senior Center, District One Hospital, and of course, we have a board member on there. So, it's a, it's a really good group. We'll meet every other month for this year. We may pare those down going forward, but we, we feel like we need to be really strong this, this first year. Also form a leadership team of just a few, a handful of that group to create the agenda to move forward with, with any action items. Just moving on from the council meeting, just wanna remind you guys, Shro Curry had updated you on the FAST program. It's that P K, it's family and schools together, that will be starting January eighth at six o'clock at the high school. I welcome you to all be there. There will be a Spanish-speaking group, a Somali-speaking group, and an English-speaking group. So, we will try to facilitate, I'm teaching one of the classes the first night, so we'll see how that goes. Um, and of course, FAST is really concentrated on the hi- high school success and college access. That's, those are the two main points. Another date I'd like to have you all mark on your calendars is February twenty-fifth. I know that's kind of long, long range, I'll probably bring that to you every time I'm up here. That will be a community forum on bully prevention, featuring the SOAR program. Uh, the SOAR program is stay safe, own our schools, act responsible, and respect everyone, and that is at the Faribault Middle School. That's the Alveas and the, uh, prevention, oh, I can't remember.
P V I S.
Thank you, I can't remember what that stands for. But.
Positive Behavior Intervention Strategies.
Sheriff Dunn will be at that forum, kicking it off. It's in partnership with the A A U W as well, which is the American Association of University Women. Troy Priggy, of course, will be there, our, um, principal, Todd, will be there, representing the district. The Rice County Collaborative is also a partner in that. And we're hoping to get about seventy-five community members to attend. A very sensitive topic, and hopefully, some of you will also join us, so I invite you to that meeting. I believe that is my report. Thank you. Oh, and this, oh, I forgot, this catalog came out, so. Becky Lippert, did you, everybody get it? Please say yes you did. Okay, thank you. Went to Becky.
What time on the twenty-fifth?
Oh, thanks, it's, um, five-thirty.
And then I just have to put a plug in for the catalog.
Great.
Um, my boyfriend actually took the picture of the ribbon-cutting this in the, in the bulletin, so.
Everybody look for that picture.
She's that rotary that would.
I particularly noticed that one. Thank you, Anne Marie. Okay. All right, next item on our agenda is to approve the superintendent evaluation results. We met, um, in closed session, uh, a few weeks ago to discuss, uh, these evaluation results, and this is our public summary of, uh, that, uh, Mr. Sesker's, uh, first-year performance.